All right.
Well, Mark, hi, I'm Paul. I'm the old new, new old planning director.
Hey, Paul. Nice to finally meet you in person.
Same here.
Um.
So Paul's dropping right in the middle of this whole process, but.
Well, we're not actually at the middle yet, so you're in luck.
I've read, I've read all the documents, including for tonight, so I'm very happy.
Great.
It's very noticeable improvement.
Well, I'm tempted to say that after the meeting tonight, I'm going to put the first draft together. Um, can somebody let me share?
You should be able to at the bottom, Mark.
Okay. Can you see that?
Yes.
Great. Okay. So. A confession, when I read the site plan review section for the first time, the thing that kind of bowled me over, or at least temporarily, was that there were a lot of different performance standards in there. Um, but as it turns out, most of the performance standards were for a specific district. I think it was the VCD district or something like that. So what looked like it was a solid eight to 10 pages of performance standards was really a solid six pages of performance standards for that district and very little with regard to the rest of town. So.
That's a more recent one that we had a consultant help with. So that's the reason.
So I think what I'm going to do is take those ones specific to that district. And I'm going to put it in the special district regulations along with floodplain and water resource and anything else that's an overlay district. Because it is kind of a standalone set of rules. And then that turned my attention back to what I usually do, which is at least talk to you about whether or not you want to take an approach to some more broader based performance standards. And that's what I've got up on the screen right now. So the idea is that if somebody is applying for a special permit or a site plan approval for what is basically called a non-residential or multifamily use, um, defined there in six, three, two, as, um, anything which is, uh, non-residential or six or more dwelling units, then the planning board, uh, or this, or let's put it this way, the special permit granting authority would implement these standards. Uh, if there's no special permit granting authority, because it doesn't require a special permit, the planning board would do it for uses available as bright. And before we get to the punchline at the end, I'll just take you there directly. These are waivable, so you can buy special permits, say, you don't need to do this, but they're not guidelines. They're standards which are very different. Guidelines have no force in effect of law. Standards do. The thinking is that everybody's bylaw has standards for parking signs. Sometimes you see landscaping. Sometimes you see, uh, noise and lights. Those are probably the most common ones. And when you go to make a special permit or a site plan approval decision, there they are. You either comply or you don't, or you get a waiver if the bylaw allows for that. And if you've only got two of those things and five of them are important on making a decision for granting a special permit or site plan approval, then what, what you're left with usually in site plan approval is minimize this and maximize that, which is great, but it's not objective. It's subjective. Minimize, uh, you know, disruption of vegetated areas. Don't, don't clear cut more than you need to, that kind of thing. This, this, this is an attempt to objectify these, these kinds of standards again, without necessarily requiring you to adhere to them, you know, religiously. So I, I, I just did this the other night with, um, Wakefield. And the first thing I heard was from a member of the ZBA who said, you know, do we really have to do this? And I said, well, let's just walk through it first and see if it really turns out to be as draconian as the board discussed without me, or whether or not it just makes a lot of common sense. And that's why I always advise boards recodifying a bylaw to treat this as a sushi menu. You don't have to buy everything. You know, just cut it back if that's what you think is the way to approach it. So there's some exemptions in six, three, three.
Sorry, Mark, can we go back to six, three, two?
Yeah.
With regards to the definition, um, I wanted you to just check with the panel here. So the non-residential or multifamily use shall mean, um, any use in a non-residential use or a multifamily dwelling or mixed use structure with six or more dwelling units. And I'm wondering, so for example, we just reviewed a dentist office going on West Main Street that has dentist office below and only four units above. And I feel like that's something I would want to see a site plan for.
Okay.
Um, now it's also.
You could see a site plan. The question is whether or not it would be subject to these standards.
Right. So I'm thinking, you know, mixed use implies that there is some non-residential and the standards apply to non-residential. So I'm kind of thinking, uh, you know, maybe we edit it, you know, mixed use structure with greater than 5,000 square feet of floor space as opposed to a specific number of units.
Could I speak to that? Um, I, I think under our tax code, I think anything with more than four units is a commercial enterprise. If, is that correct?
Well, it's, it would be classified as residential for purposes of zoning regulation, not as commercial.
So that, Mark, this is Nick, the building commissioner. I was just going to chime in too real quick. From, from a building code standpoint, anything larger than two units is commercial. But from a zoning standpoint, like Mark just said, residential is residential.
I, I would, um, classify, for example, a long-term care facility, AKA a nursing home as residential, not as business. Same thing would be true of an assisted living facility. This is where people live. And it's certainly a dwelling for purposes of the Federal Fair Housing Act amendments and the ADA. So. So what would you suggest? 5,000 GFA?
I, I think I would be more comfortable, you know, anything smaller than that is probably going to be, you know, a decent, yeah, you know, it could be a single family house with 5,000 square feet. Um, so a mixed use with 5,000 square feet is going to have probably, you know, some sort of commercial or office space at the bottom and maybe one or two apartments upstairs. And I'm fine not seeing anything on that. I think anything bigger than that maybe, but I'll defer to the board or the, the panel.
Let me just explain that any non-residential use is born of my local experience with the dumbest decision my planning board ever made here with a, I think it's a 1,200 square foot Starbucks on the exact wrong corner near a train crossing with four parking spaces in the lot and no left turnout. It's, it's just a mess. It's been a mess for 15 years. And I've seen similar examples of very small, very intense uses that escape site plan approval or performance standards of any sort. So.
Yeah, I, I had originally struck with six or more dwelling units and just said, any mixed use structure. And then started thinking about it and saying, okay, well, you know, if there was a, I'm thinking of, um, one of the properties that we looked on West Main where there was a spa downstairs and an apartment building upstairs. You know, and it's in a, what used to be a single family house.
I just, I guess, um, looking at it, you know, from a, a, you know, another perspective too is, you know, in certain areas of town, if we're trying to encourage more development, are there opportunities to, you know, use a process that's in, you know, if it's the right type of project in the right place, uh, can we, should we be considering that as well? Cause you know, we, we, we apply special permits to an awful lot of uses here and are there, I mean, I know we're not changing that, but I, I would just put that out there that, you know, that number that we put in there could really matter, you know, because if we're, if it's triggering a site plan versus a special permit, it's a very different decision-making process.
Well, this wouldn't make that judgment. This would just apply, uh, accordingly.
Yeah.
Through the, through the correct authority, either the SPGA or the Site Plan Review Authority.
Okay.
So I'm, you know, why don't we think about that? I'm going to flag that. And so when I re, I put this back together, I'll just put a comment in the right margin so that everybody can revisit it. But, but think about what standard you would want to come up with if you don't like this one. Um, the exemptions are pretty straightforward. You, you don't want to have emergency responses judging, judged by the noise standards. Uh, municipalities always exempt themselves and events are one of a kind affairs. So I'm down to, go ahead.
Sorry, we have a, we have a site where they do rodeos, uh, within, they're in a residential area and then does anybody know how late the rodeo goes?
Is it like a business or is it?
I, I live nearby and I hear them, uh, um, they, they go fairly late in the night, but it's never disrupted me like after midnight or anything like that.
Okay. I just didn't, I didn't know if we wanted to align that with what we usually permit them for operating hours.
I think they generally fall within that period that's on this sheet already. And, uh, it's certainly no worse than what I hear from Great Woods.
That Cowboy Bob, is it?
I don't know who that is.
This town in Dunstable called me up once. They had an agricultural operation that had run amok. And on Saturdays, they had Cowboy Bob giving six gun demonstrations. I was like, uh, that's not really agriculture, is it? So I just wondered if he migrated south. That's all. All right, lighting. So the standard here is in the first paragraph, the general standard. So we want to reduce light pollution, trespassing glare basically by requiring for bigger projects a photometric plan, uh, that show uh, that there's not going to be any such thing. And then depends on how serious you want to get about international dark sky standard compliance, but you can, that's in the number two. Um, you know, again, if, if they can't do it, you can always grant them a waiver, but it's a good thing to shoot for. I was at a, 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 a conference in University of Denver, maybe 20 years ago, and the speaker held up a candy bar and he said, for 65% of Americans, this is the Milky Way. That was 20 years ago.
Yeah.
Mark, on number three, under light intensity, where it says LED lighting is preferred.
Yep.
Um, with the panels agreement, I'd like to put in a, um, qualifying that it says it's of a color temperature appropriate for the use. LED lighting can be really, really, really bright.
I'm making, uh, notes on a hard copy that's in my lap, so.
Okay.
I got it.
Great. Should we, um, should we maybe have a brief discussion on the amendment that may be before the board soon?
In the town meeting?
Maybe, yeah, I'm sorry, town meeting.
Do you mean the petitioned article?
Yeah.
Yeah, get ahead of it at this point?
No.
Stage, or you think leave it alone?
We reviewed the petitioned article and voted not to endorse it.
Okay. I wasn't aware of that, Tim. Sorry about that.
My fault, Nick. I should have told you. Sorry.
No, it's, um, their recommendation was not well-conceived.
Okay, I can, I, I can appreciate that decision by the board from my side. So thank you.
Um, but yes, I would be, I know we do have a lighting bylaw. I think it's an 11 in our current bylaws.
Which exempts single family dwellings.
So when we get to that point, Mark, if you can note, if you have, uh, residential specific lighting guidelines in terms of a standard lighting bylaw, it'd be interesting to look at those. Cause our existing bylaw basically says if you're a one or two family property, there are no restrictions. Um, which is good because it means you can put a spotlight in front of your garage without talking to anybody, but it also doesn't allow any enforcement on the other side of it if somebody has five spotlights pointing to their neighbor's bedroom window.
All right, I'm making a note of that too. Um, I'll go back and look at section 11. I hadn't looked at it in a while. Uh, the rest of it strikes me as, you know, more or less common sense. Searchlights, hello. Um, outdoor signs and, and indoor lighting being projected outside. I just recently had a trial in, on a Watertown R and D, 85,000 square feet. The allegation was that it would, you know, basically light up like a lantern at night. I was defending the, the R and D facility and there was a clause that we had the board put in that if the lighting was bothersome, they, we would put in an automatic shades that shut down, um, you know, relatively early in the evening. And I would imagine that that would be the kind of condition that you would anticipate here for something that's going to have two or three shifts, operate at night, and you don't want it to bother people. Anything else here catch your attention?
Uh, Mark, just on the searchlights, I realize if we're going through a site planner, special permit that the planning board or SPGA could issue conditions regarding this, but, um, I guess, I mean, obviously if, if there's just typical events that the select board, um, you know, issues day permits for, and I guess they, they would still have their right. I mean, obviously they would still have their right to, um, so I guess how, how would that work if you had the planning board issues the determination on the uh, condition on the, the searchlights? Do towns typically, when people, when, you know, events are, are had or when they have searchlights at, let's say, car dealerships, is that typically approved by the, by the select board for the actual event itself?
It depends on how the lighting bylaw is written. Some select boards may retain jurisdiction over it, but otherwise it's whoever has been given the permitting authority by the town.
Okay, okay.
So I, I would think it would fall more to the planning board.
Okay, great.
And the police department.
Yeah.
So on illuminated surfaces, you basically want these things pointed down. And I think that kind of goes along with hours of operation. I just permitted a new McGovern Subaru dealership and you know, we're going to basically have very little lighting at night, just, just enough for security and safety. And we had to prepare an, uh, an, an O and M plan for the lights that the board approved as a condition of the permit. And there are a bunch of neighbors in an old condo development, so it was one of the major issues. And I'm going over to noise, my favorite topic. Just had a trial in which the, uh, noise standards came into play. The, the state limitation is 10 dBA above ambient in number one below, meaning that.
We are well acquainted.
I'm sure. I, I think I remember a case that was reported in the land court. Was that?
That would have been the Cranberry Bog, uh, solar facility. This was an issue with that.
Yes, I was, I, I think one of our first meetings I was told that solar was a, a nasty thing we were going to try to avoid for as long as we could. But I don't think we're going to be able to avoid it forever. Say it again.
Just carve it out.
Well, we're not going to be able to avoid it forever.
Oh, yeah, I know. But if we can separate it from the larger recodification, that'll save us some drama.
Okay. Well, do you have a problem with, with just mentioning to people that the 10, 310 CMR 7.10 is coin of the realm? And whatever it applies to, it applies to. If it doesn't apply, it doesn't apply. So for example, I don't believe backup beepers are part of 310 CMR 7.10 because it's, uh, it's, it's, it's transient. This is more directed towards things like HVAC equipment.
Hmm.
Um, generators, things that have a more permanent, although truck idling is, is generally a part of this measurement as well.
Well, that's, we're kind of where.
We would want truck idling included if we wanted to, yeah, especially with southwestern.
Cause in, I, I know 10 dBA is the state standard, but uh, just even a small car running is greater than that. Um,
Well.
So I was trying to determine if this was, are these the standards once it's built or is it also during the construction period? Because that's unrealistic to expect less than 10 dBA during construction.
No, it's, it's actually skipping the construction period. It's in the permitting stage when you're projecting the sounds that are going to occur in the operating stage, and then it is enforceable in the operating stage, but generally.
When you say operating, meaning once built?
Yes, right.
Got it. Thank you.
Uh, long ago I had a client in, um, Auburn on the Oxford Town Line who got the bright idea of putting an outdoor cafe behind his restaurant. And he was not trying to hurt anybody. He had actually a pretty good business going. He had, I remember he had Jay Giles a couple of times, Three Dog Night. And by a quirk of nature, it bothered some people in Auburn up a hill, Hill Street. And, uh, we had a four-day trial, a jury trial. And they said it was not a nuisance shortly after that DEP crackdown, told him he had to enclose it. Which did him a favor because instead of having summer events, he had a wedding venue all of a sudden. And it was pretty soundproof once he enclosed it. But they did move like a glacier, but they did come in and enforce.
So is it realistic to expect a multifamily, an apartment building to maintain less than 10 dBA considering a car runs at 60 to 80 dBA?
Well, it's going to be governed by this, the standards of 310 CMR 7.10. So.
Okay.
Lawnmowers, leaf blowers, people having loud birthday parties, none of that counts.
Okay.
And the, you know, the thinking of acoustical engineers on all of this is that it does, sound doesn't become perceptible until barely perceptible at 3 dBA above ambient, perceptible at five, but not bothersome until it really reaches close to 10. If, if I was defending a new facility and I, the best my acoustical engineer was going to say is it, it, it would be nine in the dead of night at the most sensitive receptor. I wouldn't like my chances with a judge because nine's too close to 10. But I've just had a trial where the, the testimony was five at one location in the dead of night for a very short period of time, like uh, literally one, one hundredth of the time measured by or projected by the acoustical engineer. I don't think that the judge is going to have a problem with that. And these kinds of things, um, are becoming more, um, important in the permitting process. Lights and noise are right behind parking, loading and, and signage.
So Mark, uh, you know, based on our experiences here too, um, and I'm sure other places when we talk about 10 dBA above ambient, does this? Now normally when we get an application in, we're not requiring them to do a sound study. And I guess the question is, is what's the baseline for ambient? How do we determine that?
I think it's well within your reach to use 53G to engage an acoustical engineer. I don't think I, I, I wouldn't do it for a, you know, small potatoes sort of addition to the community. But I was just down the road from you recently in Berkeley when, um, GFI was, Marcus Partners was proposing two warehouses on Myricks with access directly onto 140. And we had acoustical engineers testify for the applicant and we had another acoustical engineer, uh, guy I normally use, Chris Menj, uh, testify as a peer reviewer. This is very helpful. And it takes away some of the fears too, because people think it's just going to be like a, you know, a huge bother and a lot of noise. Um, there are things you can do to mitigate. There are things you can't do to mitigate, but the, the acoustical engineers do this all day, every day. And there are some damn good ones out there in Massachusetts.
Yeah, a place I could see us potentially doing that is I saw there's a application for a warehouse going on South Worcester, a couple of parcels over from Whole Market Foods. And Whole Market Foods is constantly being brought up to select board for noise complaints, trucks running all night.
Yeah. And how big a warehouse?
I don't.
Six figures square feet, I think.
Yeah.
Well, that's, you know, that's a prime candidate to be regulated for noise control.
And it abuts a resident, so that's one little stretch is zoned industrial, but right across the street is residential, right behind it's residential.
The sound is measured at the nearest occupied property line. So it's that, that's the standard.
Okay.
Um, and I think a lot of the Mickey Mouse stuff gets eliminated because 310 CMR 7.10 does not apply universally to any noise. I mean, if, if you, if you took peak reads on this, on a sound meter, you'd, we'd have no Cardinals.
Right.
Uh, the last three things there under hours of operation, more or less attempt to regulate specific types of equipment. And I know in my town, we just, I think we've banned gasoline-powered leaf blowers in a couple of years. And until then, somebody squawking still and wants to license them so that people have a disincentive to use them. But you know, basically loading, unloading between 6:00 PM and 8:00 AM. Um, you can't do it. Operating or permitting tools, equipment.
I'm still seeing page one on the, um, six, three, two on the screen. Is that everybody?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't move it down. Thank you.
Long as it's not just me.
I'm actually not even seeing the, uh, I'm looking at it. I have mine up, but for some reason it's not showing up as a shared screen.
Uh.
Probably my computer.
There's the noise hours of operations thing I was just talking about. So, you know, just common sense. Turn it off if you're doing uh, exterior work for drilling or demo. Um, between 6:00 PM and 8:00 AM on weekdays or Saturday. And then the last one, construction devices, jackhammers, et cetera, between 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM. Uh, move up to best management practices if it can be feasible. Just to make my, my, endear myself with Concord, I'm going to add gas leaf blowers there. All right, we're treating this like the budget. If you want to hold, yell it out. Um, site development and operational standards. This is mostly to do with preparing the site for construction, you know, just how far can you go? I, I recall years ago in Mansfield, when I lived there, somebody cleared the lot at the corner of 140 and what's the crossroad? They're the main crossroad in the center of town. Is that? I can't remember, but it was, they, they, they cleared it off, cut every tree, fenced it, you know, buy or lease, obviously, but it just leached sediment out onto the road and that was a prominent location in town. So I've always thought since that experience that you don't just want to give somebody a chainsaw and tell them to go to work.
Mark, in six, three, six, the very last sentence, it says, operations of developed sites shall meet standards 13 through 18. We stop at 14. We stop at fourteen. So I think what may have happened is is you kept our number, what is thirteen and fourteen?
And then I whittled it back, so that's what happened.
Okay, I was wondering if maybe we're, I was wondering if maybe we were missing six standards that you meant to add to the end of that.
No, see the crossouts there, I um, I, I just forgot to go back and change the numbering there.
Okay.
So I did preserve some of your standards if I thought that they covered ground, not in my template or. Um, you know, were worth saving. So minimize obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessible location is not yellow because it was in your existing text. Um, minimize tree, I just, this is redundant, it's said somewhere else. And then these two things here toward the end. Or, yeah, were not covered in this section, so I added them in there.
There was only one thing that I noticed that we asked for elimination or minimization of that I don't see referenced here. And that was soil erosion and sedimentation, and we also require a. Uh, erosion and sediment control plan prior to just, prior to and during construction. And so I didn't know if that was intentionally left out, if it's no longer. Um. I, I think it's important, but I'll leave it to the board.
I'm just trying to remember if I put it somewhere else.
I did look.
I don't, I don't think I would.
I did a, yeah, I did a search for the, for. Erosion and or sedimentation, so uh, my, with the panel's agreement. I would put it in number one specifically because that is for outside of the development footprint. And then add it to four B, which is within the footprint.
Well, let me go back up and find where you're talking about here.
Okay. Um. That just seemed to be the most logical to me, but I um. I will defer to other people if they think it is better left or better as a its own item. Or some, put somewhere else.
Say it again, so I've got good notes.
Sure. Um, so we had within our standards, um. Uh, will eliminate or minimize soil erosion and sedimentation. By requiring an erosion and sedimentation control plan prior to and during construction.
And where do you think I should put that?
So my first thought was, I think it should go within number one land disturbance, because that is the area outside the footprint. Of the development. And then include it, I I know it's redundant, but I think it should probably also go in four B within the site design. Because that would be captured within, so we would eliminate and minimize soil erosion and sedimentation both. In the site specifically or. Um, and it won't affect it immediately on the outskirts of the site.
So just repeat the same language there.
Yes, please, and thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Again, if people feel differently.
Hearing no objection. Uh, how about five, six, et cetera?
No comments on those.
And then you can see on the next page that I have retained your um. Control of waste and stormwater management provisions.
I did wanna point out a number eleven. We actually do not allow irrigation except if it's on a private well.
How about if I just switch that sentence around to an affirmative statement of that?
Yep.
Shall require.
On number fourteen, should we make a reference to this? To the stormwater management bylaw?
There is a dense center reference there in the paragraph.
Oh.
Uh, back to eleven, Mark two. If, if we're gonna, if we only allow it by private irrigation by private well, should we just eliminate? The consultation with the water department and have it be a consult with Board of Health?
Yeah.
Should, yeah, should say after consultation with the Board of Health.
Got it.
So says their, so says the health agent.
Okay, I got it.
He's a figment of your imagination, Paul.
He's in my head.
Right, I'm moving on to pedestrian and vehicular access. I saw you had some standards here that. I thought. Were a little bit aggressive. Especially on level of service. But wow, I'll hold off until we get there. So. In, in some ways. What you're, you're, you're kind of trying to recreate here is highway access permit. But you can only do it on local roads because D O T doesn't share jurisdiction on state highways. But what you're gunning for here is whatever they do on a state highway, you can do on a local road. I actually did that. Lincoln, Lincoln called me up many years ago and they said, we got traffic problems. And I said, why? And they said, well, it's mostly our nonprofit um art. Locations and and um, you know, other, other nonprofit activities. And they're not on state highways, they're all on local roads. So essentially what Lincoln did was recreate the highway access permit structure. Where change of use over certain, that will generate over a certain number of trips makes you apply. You have to show your curb cut, you have to. You know, indicate um. The, the, the width of the uh, ench, access and egress. You have to mitigate problems that you've created. And it seems to have slowed things down. I'm not, I'm not saying go that far. I'm, I'm just saying, you know, come up with some basic standards, for example, for access. Um. Prioritized access would be via common driveway, be an existing side street. Via cul-de-sac or loop road. Uh, you don't wanna necessarily access things by roadways abutting residential districts. And if it's got frontage on more than one street, pick the one that's gonna cause the least impact. I, that, that last sentence is yours already. Ingress and egress points shall be kept to a minimum. Uh, not more than one driveway per lot is allowed in the Village Center Core District. Uh, that's existing reg. Uh, same thing goes here. The last sentence is yours already. Um, but. Adequate driveways, additional driveways are conditional. Driveways should afford site distance, both stopping and intersection site distance. And. If you gotta clean it up, you gotta clean it up. Sometimes in order to have site distance, you've gotta go on to neighboring properties to cut. Uh, to get, uh, you know, the adequate linear distance. Curb cuts, twenty feet for residential, thirty feet for commercial. Um, again, you. Are not gonna control where it is on a state highway, but. You can always make a recommendation to the regional office. Interior circulation, most of that paragraph is your existing regs. This is the transportation plan approval uh, for anything in excess of twenty five thousand gross square feet. You're gonna have a submittal of a standard T I A S. And that's to mass D O T standards. Now.
Mark, Mark, sorry, within five B? Before you scroll down.
Five C?
B is, I'm sorry, B is in boy.
Yeah.
Uh, detailing the accepted traffic impacts, should that be expected?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
Sure.
So I assume that you're getting these now when you have something major happening? How routinely do you have uh, uh, transportation engineers appear in front of you and or peer review with your own?
Generally, anything that gets big enough to raise concerns. Even though sometimes we can tell that, because we've looked at twenty of them, that putting. That putting something on a major state highway isn't gonna have a noticeable impact, but the size of the project kind of. Makes us.
Yeah, I mean, people are watching and they wanna know that you've at least done. Your due diligence so that they can go. You know, they can go home from the public hearing thinking that somebody's looking out for their better interests. Sometimes it's overkill to do a full blown T I A S. I mean, the, the level of service component. Of a T I A S is, I mean, it's useful information, but sometimes it's not the most critical. Information, especially in an area where there's not much delay. So. Uh, most of the time, I, if, if I'm representing the private sector, I'll, I'll, I'll work with the local. Transportation engineer, the one working for the board to see if we can cut it back to a traffic study or a traffic report. Which features total generate, total trip generation, peak hours, crash data, site distance. Probably not much more than that. It's, and then instead of loading it into the level of service. Um. Calculations, it, it, it wouldn't have mattered anyway. But that's a standard T I A S. And then if it's twenty five thousand feet or more. Um, although this is not necessarily something that works terribly good in an, in an area way outside of. Urbanization. Because you don't have commuter rail passes, um, bus routes, things of that sort. Um, you know, there's enough here in this T M C component. That would allow for some mitigation on the number of trips, particularly. Um. Carpool, van pool. On-site shower facilities for more people and more people are biking to work if they go. Um.
Yeah, and you know, this is, these are good practices and we do have limited regional bus. Um, you know, there are actually two N B T A stations on our uh, borders. So, you know, I think keeping even things like the commuter rail passes could be okay. Could be used at some point.
I would have used it in a past life.
Yeah. Aren't they cutting out Lakeville?
Yeah, Lakeville's shutting down. It's, it's going, it's switching up to Middleborough.
Okay.
I mean, the stations, the two stations are only about a quarter of a mile apart, but. Um, but Middleborough's, uh, when they open up that line, it'll start there. Although if they run the Cape Flyer, it may still be out of Lakeville, but I'm not sure.
So here's the uh, stuff I carved out of your existing level of service. I think you said. Uh, if it's gonna go below D. Um. No, I'm sorry. Shall not reduce it below C or the existing L O S, whichever is lower. For local streets and D for arterial intersections. And I sort of bumped that up to D. Meaning it's more lenient. And if it's gonna cause a decrease in one level of service or an increase in ten seconds of delay. You've gotta show some plans that might improve the geometry of the intersection. Uh, whatever mitigation might be useful. So not much of a difference, but some.
Something real quick.
Sure.
It, and it, it goes back also to the previous section about the twenty five thousand square feet. And the, the traffic impact. Um, we already special, have a special permit requirement for any facility over ten thousand square feet. And parking spaces, twenty five square, uh, twenty five parking spaces or more. Uh, is there a reason why the traffic study is at twenty five thousand or not? At the similar level that we special permit parking lots and sizes of buildings at ten thousand?
I would say that if you're going to tell me that you will waive it back. For buildings between ten and twenty five thousand. Then I would leave it in so that you could waive it back. But if you're gonna, if you're gonna apply it simply because you can, I think ten thousand's kinda unfair. It's expensive. T I A S is, you know, I, I, I work with Bob Michaud from M D M Transportation, Jeff Dirk. Ken Cram, and my understanding from them is that the, the, the bottom line for a T I A S is somewhere around twenty thousand.
Okay.
Plus the, plus the peer review fee.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Mark on number nine.
Yeah.
Um.
I crossed that off because your parking section's gonna say that.
Okay, I was wondering why we removed the standard to minimize curb parking, that's all.
No, your, your parking section's gonna say, oh, off, off-street parking shall be provided as follows.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I like that you're switching it to a maximum parking. I think that's a, a, a good move to ensure that we're not going to see an ocean of parking.
Yeah, the opposite is what I've seen, you know, very recently and um. I like a provision at the end of these sections that say, that says, um. You know, if, if you wanna put in less parking because you've either got offsite shared spots or. Uh, two or more businesses are going to share parking and they don't use the spaces at the same time. Or you just think that the calculation is wrong because you, more of your people are staying home and working remotely. Then ask for a special permit. And if everybody agrees, generally with the help of, of a parking expert. That you're pretty um, on pretty solid ground. By special permit, this is, this is gonna be in the parking section. Uh, by special permit, just ask and you can get by with less spaces. Some towns make you bank the spaces that they didn't build so that if they ever needed them, they could be built at that point in time. But I think parking predictions from experts don't really require that, and I'd rather see that. Uh, you know, it, it, it's just gonna be a green grassy area. Why not let it be used for something a little bit more. Attractive than banked parking land in the event the prediction didn't work out. But that'll be, that'll be in the parking section, not here.
Yeah, I'm all for any mitigation of overdoing parking for people. There's, there's too many parking lots everywhere.
I, I, I did New Bedford many years ago and in the middle of the project, Compass Bank proposed to put a. You know, corporate center in downtown New Bedford, when you ran it through the calculation in the table, it was. It was like five hundred parking spaces. Do you want a parking lot or do you want the corporate headquarters? So we.
Right.
We cut it back that way.
Five hundred spaces in a downtown, that's.
Yeah.
That's. It's not walkable. I mean, unless it's in a garage, but then that. That gets expensive pretty quickly.
Yeah. And by the way, when you see the sign provision, you'll see pretty much the same thing. If it's. Two, I I uh the Subaru dealership that I permitted enact and called me back after the permits have been issued and said, now we gotta go for the signs. We're gonna need a variance. How do you get a variance for a sign? Soil condition, shape, or topography of the sign necessitate a variance? It's really what it is, is I don't wanna comply with this because it's kinda dumb as it applies to me and. What I wanna do isn't gonna hurt anybody. That's a special permit. So you'll see the same sort of special permit relief in the sign section when we get to the first draft here. There's a section on bicycle and pedestrian safety and then location of parking areas. Um, this basically says. Um where feasible, side or rear, but you can still put it in the front if the. Authority decides that that's not gonna blow anything up. And then this.
Going back to twelve.
Yeah.
Um with an F. With the panels agreement, um I'd also like to require a paved or unpaved public parking area. If it's a budding, we do have a rail trail going in. We just had a. We just had a.
A paved access route. Do you just want me to add paved or unpaved?
No, I wanna say so paved access route to the bike way is great, but I would like to add and a paved or unpaved. Public parking area.
I agree.
Okay, I'm gonna write it, write it in my notes here, hang on.
I may, I may have missed something, but Laura, um is this? I guess, are you getting that? So if if a developer comes in and their property abuts a public bike way right away? We're gonna require them to also have public parking for access to that?
Potentially, yes. If we deem it, so for example, to the Balfour Farm site. Um it abuts directly the new rail trail.
Yeah.
And so we had them put in a parking, an unpaved parking area at the end of Briggs.
Yeah.
Yep, so something along those lines. It it's not a requirement, so let's say, for example, they build on the parcel next to it. Do we need another one right there? No, but I think it would be nice to have the ability to condition it.
Okay.
Okay, I got, I got note to that effect.
Just to make it easier for people to get to the the rail trail, that's all.
Well, they're just finishing up in Sudbury. My local Bruce Freeman rail trail goes from Lowell to Framingham. This is the last stretch that uh ties the whole thing together.
Could I, could I add something to this? Um to go along with what Laura was saying about the public access to the bike way? The Open Space Committee is currently working on a plan to create access to our waterways. Could we also mandate in a similar way that we create uh an access and parking requirement to our our waterways? If we deem it necessary?
I don't see why we couldn't add. Why don't we add something more generic that just, because this is talking about access routes to bikeways. Now we've added public parking areas. Why don't we just add? Um publicly accessible locations, bikeways and other amenities.
I I wouldn't mind adding more to it as long as we keep the teeth on the on the public parking spots.
Yeah.
But a- any access to our our, you know, alternative transportation features and natural landscape and waterways. Ponds, that would all, I'd like all that covered if possible.
Alright, so I've got, if the property abuts a public bike way right of way, public parking area. Or other public amenity, a paved access route may be required.
No, I think, cuz that that's not requiring them to put a paved parking area. That's saying if. It abuts a public parking area. If if that's how I'm reading it. Does that sound the same to you, Laura?
Yep.
Okay.
And you wanna require the.
Correct. We wanna provide the public access, so if they wanna come in and do a picnic lunch. And they don't live nearby, they can leave their car and get to the site.
And the. Parking area. Would be privately constructed and owned.
So in Balfour. That was part of the, I think it's part, is it part of the homeowners association?
That would make sense.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's always, it's always a liability issue. It's always a.
That that was gonna be my question mark is like, so if if, I guess Laura, something to consider, if Balfour comes and gets those roads accepted as public ways. Then the then the developer then creates the parking lot, but then at at what point is the town responsible and liable for? Maintenance and in anything else that may happen in those areas if if the development of that property becomes public.
Yeah, there's a big difference.
The open space is still owned by the property owners, period.
That parking lot become part of the open space?
I mean, it's in this specific one, I don't think we we didn't deed it to the town. So it wasn't carved out as a part of the subdivision, so.
We can just. Public easement.
Yeah.
And the parking spa, parking spot should provide access to whatever open space that it was built on originally anyways.
Yeah, so all of that's gonna be on a case by case basis. I think what we've got here is a good base for future. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, uh there are some situations in which parking areas in a private development will. Devalue to some extent the areas closest to the parking. Um you you if you get an influx of people from outside the subdivision coming in, you know.
If it's a negative impact on the community, yeah.
Yeah, right. And then, of course, there's liability issues as well. Let me, let me take a crack at this. I'll, I'll. I'll do a little, I know that there are statutes that say if you open up your property. To recreational use or conservation use by the public, you're not liable. So let me just check that statute again.
Yeah, I believe that is true. It's just if you charge your fee, that's when you have to have the insurance.
Right.
But yeah, as I would read it, I guess it would be like if the property abuts a public bike way or right of way, a paved access route. And public parking area to, well, a paved access route to the bike way and a public parking area may be required. Is that, would that be? The better way to write it?
Yeah.
Laura's a little more eloquent than I am.
I'll, you know, the, uh, like in the subdivision control law. You're entitled to identify and temporarily hold open space for three years. That's what the statute says. Um and that's because you're expected as a municipality to buy it within three years. If it's that important to you. Um i- if you attempt to just take it as open space. Um I believe that the court, Judge Piper in a stow case. Said it was permissible and he was reversed by the appeals court.
Well, let's let's take, for instance, uh our upcoming possible Elm Street, uh Reed and Barton Development. They have a pond on private property that's connected to our river system. And I would like to be able to enforce that to be able to be uh public use, like a public access. Well, regardless of what's built there.
Well, now you're getting into. I mean, you're really headed into taking jurisprudence at this point. There's a couple of Supreme Court cases that have exactly that example. Uh Kaiser Etna, a Hawaiian case. It was a an inland saltwater pond hydraulically connected to the ocean. They opened it up and all of a sudden the Kaiser Etna Resort was filled with people like you and me that they didn't want there. They sued um the government for for taking it by opening it up. And they won. It's as, there's a whole line of taking cases that. Turn on whether or not there's been a physical invasion of the land promoted by the government without compensation.
Yeah, if we get to that point, we'll need to go deep into what is the right of the waterway laws and all that fun jazz, so.
I'll, I'll try to keep it, you know, mild and and not uh confrontational. Let me see what I can come up with.
Thank you.
I don't think I changed anything on aesthetic standards. These are yours, mostly cuz. The ones I had were equally milquetoast. Um but this is, these are the basics. You could obviously go into. Much more detail in terms of architectural standards and and preferences, but I wouldn't do that at town meeting. I think you're inviting a disaster. And if you adopted them as regulations, you don't need to go to town meeting. I mean, I, just as a point of reference, I was asked by Newbury Port to review their five pages. And you know, it's all Greek revival architectural standards. They didn't, I told them not to put it in front of town meeting and. They ended up taking my advice. It's it's about this short in the bylaw, but they accomplished what they needed to by reg, not by bylaw. Um on on utilities. Uh basic ideas here are. Everything should be adequate in the, no. I haven't changed this yet. Everything should be adequate, capacity wise, water sewer. Site security, um underground utilities are preferred. The uh. Fire alarm system should be reviewed and approved by the fire chief. And then the last one on fiscal analysis. I wouldn't use this to um make the decision. In other words, if you thought it was going to be too demanding on cost of services to the municipality. I wouldn't deny something solely on that basis. What I'm, what I like about this is getting you the ability to get the knowledge. About what the cost benefit analysis is going to be. Those of you who know Judy Barrett, Judy and I did a project for the small town of Leicester, west, west of Worcester. They zoned for big boxes, uh they just wanted big boxes on stretch of, I don't remember the road, I think it was Route nine. And they got a, they got a Walmart. And maybe it was a Home Depot. It was a Home Depot. It was two hundred and ten thousand square foot Home Depot. And they they promised that there would be a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in gross tax contributions. Judy found. In the neighboring town of, or nearby town of Oxford, a similarly sized Home Depot. And little was Walmart telling us that there were eight hundred police calls to the Oxford Police Department. As a result of the Walmart or the the Home Depot. So what does that do to a hundred and seventy-five thousand? In in a town with two cops or three cops?
It becomes, I think you're repeating your story here, Mark. I think we heard this one last time.
Yeah, I wouldn't say no. I I would say thanks for the information. And like, you know, in in terms of multifamily housing, they're 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 right around break even for the most part. Especially if it has an affordable component. And that's including, you know, the long forbidden analysis of school kids, which is under forty B irrelevant, so. So there's the waiver um of standards provision. Uh this, because you're granting a special permit or a site plan approval, you can waive during the course of that review process. And the last provision is on enforcement.
Mark, it looks like we need a correction on the citation. So I think.
Yeah.
Four one should be six three two.
Yeah.
And then six three one and within number twelve should be six three.
Got it. So is your general um. Take on this that we should go forward and at least put this in the first draft?
I think this is a major improvement.
I noticed we don't have landscaping standards here. Are they going somewhere else?
I thought there were, uh I I thought that there were separate landscaping standards. Are there freestanding landscaping standards in another section of the bylaw? I don't have the bylaw here with me right now.
I believe so, yeah.
That's why, when I redo that, they'll stand alone. I can move them in here. If that's something that you would prefer me to do.
Yeah, they're in eighteen, section eighteen.
Yeah, do you want me to move them into this? I'm not moving parking or signs in here, so I thought if it's if it's and lighting. Or 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 not lighting, but um or uh landscaping. But, you know, they'll, it wouldn't move parking into this.
No, no. Where else would it go?
It's good, normally when I recodify um. The 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 standard table of contents is. Purpose and authority, you know, a couple of other uh minor provisions go in there, amendments, things like that. And then section two is district, section three is uses, section four is dimensions, section five is non-conformities. Six is general regulations and, you know, it starts off with parking, six point one goes to sign six point two. This would be six point three. Landscaping would be six point four.
Okay.
Um seven is special regulation, so it'd be things like wireless, earth uh movement, things of that sort.
I think, yeah, landscaping seems to. Seems logical to put them there within six.
Yeah.
I think we're happy to take some suggestions on those as well. I, we've been told by. More than one applicant that our landscaping standards are somewhat onerous.
They're onerous?
Yeah.
The tree numbers and calculations, I guess, are higher than normal.
Well, I worked with, uh, I don't, if you wanna take a look at something online, you'll never get more draconian than Southborough. But take a, take a look at their um. Their landscaping standards. There's, you know, there's some good ideas in there, but it is really expensive to do what they want.
Yeah, we get requests to waive. Usually trees, especially within subdivisions. We require quite a few of them along new streets.
Okay.
But.
Well, I'll take, I'll, when I go through the next exercise I have to go through, which is to put the first draft together. You know, if I see something that I think is fishy or expensive or unnecessary, I'll just. make a color out of it and call it to your attention.
Thank you.
So that's my next, um I think, step here. Um I've got, I've been, you know, uh when I take a plane ride or something, I've got my laptop with me and I've been gradually converting your stuff to my format. I did parking and signs this past week. And now I'm headed into the uh the more arcane sections of the bylaw, but you know, if I'm just renumbering it, I don't need to put it into the first draft. I can just tell you where it's gonna go. And I'm about ready to give you a first draft um in that regard. So why don't we see if we can find a night that's coming up in May, where toward the end of the month where I've got um you know, ten days in advance, I can give you the entire first draft or as much of it as as much of it as uh is useful. Uh Memorial Day is a little early this year. Uh can we do Tuesday, the twenty eighth, or are you still barbecuing?
I'm on vacation that week.
I'm thinking that, you know, if I can give you the first draft and we can get a second draft generated before the first of July, we're a long way off still, but I would want you to be able to begin to think about the fall where we do a workshop. And that gives you the summer to look through the bylaw and make sure we're on the right track, maybe share it with some close um confidant, confidants and and then and stakeholders, obviously. And then we come back after Labor Day and we we do the first workshop. After that, we go to a third draft. So with that in mind, why not try to do something, you're you're back um the week of the third, right? Or are you going to?
Nope.
About Tuesday, the fourth of June.
That works.
Go with me.
Six is a good time to start because it's a long night.
I guess so.
Hearing objection, it's in my book.
So, uh if we're, before we get done for the night or anything like that, is this uh like an appropriate time to go over some more uses or uses table, or should we put that for a another meeting in the future?
I think we went through it all last meeting and I'm gonna put a first draft together on that basis, but that means that we'll catch up to it again when we go through the first draft.
Okay, awesome.
You had mentioned something about an agricultural suggestion or two, and if you get that to me, you know, I can, I can take a look at it and I I can circulate that separately so that people see it.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I I made a whole set, like a whole thing of settings for each uh part of it, whether it's the open space, residential at, you know, agricultural uses, commercial and industrial stuff. I have some updates or suggestions for each each part. So it would be nice to get like some group input on whether any of those seem enticing, feasible, not reasonable.
Yeah, the one, the one problem we have is the open meeting law, so um I can circulate it. Um and then people can respond directly to me, but not include others. And then I
They generally go through town staff, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
So why don't we do that? Why don't you get it to me? I'll take a look at it. Uh I'll send it over to uh staff and then they'll circulate it with instructions to just respond to staff and and consultant.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Great.
Mark, I believe we did get uh Steve's agricultural on March twenty-sixth, which was a few days after our meeting. I did send it out to everybody, but uh I didn't get any comments.
There was a slight update, but it's mostly the same as what I sent you. But either way, I I will send out the whole new updated thing with some some keys for everybody's information. We can go from there.
Yeah, I did get it from Brian. Okay, I see it's at the top of my email, so. I'll take a look at that. Is that what you want me to circulate on your behalf? Or have you got something deeper?
Steve, you're muted.
I will send you a whole new updated one, so nothing prior goes out.
Okay.
Cool.
All right, great.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. This is great.
My pleasure. My daughter and her husband are here from New York City and I cooked dinner while I was talking to you, so. It was like, I I had it ready to go in the kitchen, so. Um at seven thirty and that's when I told them to take it out of the oven.
Well, go eat.
So we'll get, so we got seven more minutes with you. We should get our
No, 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 I'm sure they botched something in there.
You got more stories. I know it.
Uh they botched something in there. That's, I gotta go look.
Awesome. Thanks again, Mark.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Great seeing you, Tom. Oh, not hearing you, Tom.
Tom, you're unmuted, but you you aren't saying anything.
Poor Tom.
Well, we'll see you, Tom. We'll see you around here. But it's great seeing you.